Mr. Mayor, we're on.
I'd like to call this workshop for July 1st, 2019, to order. First on the agenda, we have a multimedia plan with Mark Goslin and actually Assistant Manager Crowell gonna speak on this.
One of them has to be Liz.
Yes.
Yeah, Liz cannot be here today, Liz Allen, so we have Phil, Phil again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I know all of you are aware, City of Auburn does not have a marketing department. In order, we have a staff member that's directly assigned to marketing. But we do have staff members that have skillsets that lean towards that and we tap into those resources when need be. One of those being Liz Allen as our communications manager, certainly pushes a lot of great deal of information out utilizing as many social media platforms as possible, as well as print material, graphic design, which is a great benefit for us. Mark does a great deal with community partnerships. And community partnerships do tie directly into our marketing and what we do within the city. So I've asked Mark just to give us an update on some of the marketing steps that we've taken, give you an idea of where we are currently, and then the steps that we're looking to take moving forward, and this will be a good opportunity to have some good dialogue regarding that.
Excellent. That's a great introduction. And Mayor, councilors, thank you for allowing us to do this. I think from a standpoint, all the events that we've done, you know, probably in the past five months since I've experienced, and a couple of big ones like the concert or Memorial Day Parade, I mean even, you know, Councilor Walker, congratulations again for the, you know, the bell raising, you know, these types of events don't go anywhere unless we educate our citizens and the people who support us about those types of events. And that's, you know, and that's, that's the purpose of marketing. It allows us to really kind of educate what we're doing and build a, you know, kind of momentum around it. And I, we really wanted to just show a brief slide here about impact and the impact of marketing that we feel, some good numbers to share, and, you know, you gotta remember marketing is everything from paid advertising that we might invest in, you know, such as anything that we might do on television, radio, print, but it's also social media and you can actually even boost social media posts to be specific to the target that you're trying to reach. So we have some really great numbers of who we're reaching, some impressions, but the biggest thing about this is the fact that some of these events are not as successful without these types of driven type mediums and channels of communication out to the people who might want to come attend these events. It also helps, for example, when we get a nice $10,000 gift from someone, it allows us to really kind of celebrate that, right, and tell people about that. And that might encourage more gifts to come in at the same time. Same thing with the arena, the more, the positive feedback and great press that we got from the country concert and also the great press that we received from the Memorial Day Parade. Those types of things allow our media partners and other people that are out there that want to educate people about what's going on in Auburn, gives them a platform to do so. And I think just, these are just some quick stats that we were able to pull, to kind of like put together, but I think what it really comes down to is those bottom statements is, you know, the most significant and why, right? It shows community pride, it shows the reason why we are celebrating our 150th birthday. Our partners, our partners have invested in us to help put on these types of events, and it's important for us to show that activation and show why they're partnering with us. Credibility, but the biggest thing is momentum. We don't want to lose that momentum that we're having right now with all these great positive events. So to kind of go into the next step slide is to what are we gonna do now to try to continue to build on that momentum? Is, you know, can we put together a structured marketing plan that allows us to have, you know, certain things that are quantifiable, some goals in what we're trying to do, and try to do that within a timeline of October? And then we also would be interested in putting together RFP and sending that out to media partners that might want to be invested and allow us to show us what they could do for us, and in what ways, and how they would do that, and how would they grow certain events? So I don't want to take up too much time, but I just really wanted to just provide this quick little update about why this is important and some of the next things that we're gonna be trying to do as a team and as a group with the city manager's office and also in all of our departments to continue this momentum moving forward about educating what we're doing here in Auburn, not only just for the 150th, but for future, future events.
One thing that Liz Allen was, provided you was an update on just what we've done within the 150th, our partners, what that, the outreach regarding that, you all received that, I think, last Friday. Those are things that we're tracking, that's how we're identifying the success of what we're doing, the importance of why we want to continue pushing it forward. As Mark said, that next step within the marketing plan will come back before you, and we'll be talking about, once we receive an RFP, we start looking at what, what is, what would that cost, what does that outreach provide for us, but then specifically, what are those quantifiable goal settings that we can, we can outline and present to?
Very good, thank you very much for that, that was informative. Open up to the council, any questions for Mark or Phil? Holly?
Thank you for your work on this, and I really appreciate the work that's been done, and you've got talented people. Who is the marketing team? I mean...
Yeah, so we, we pull, we really do pull from people who have resources and skillsets that we think are important, but we tap to Mark, we, Mark is busy, he's, he's got a focus that he has, but when we need to have a quick brainstorming session on, this is the outreach we want, how do we look about doing, go about doing that? Certainly Peter and I are in the room, Mark, we bring Liz into the room, and then depending on which department and which focus we are, we're looking at, but we're not afraid to also reach out to the private sector. They have a lot of the skillsets, and if there's a, a partner out there that we can give a phone call to or ask them, what are your thoughts about this, then, then we rely on that. We've done a lot of great work with them over the past.
And then also, just to follow, sorry, I don't want to interject, but there's a lot of great media partners now that have gone to know us, simply because of what we've done. Before, I think there was a lot of questions about what we're doing, how we're going about doing it, now they kind of know what we're doing simply because of the, the type of events that we're putting on, that they're actually excited about talking about these opportunities, and I've already started to share some suggestions, some, some feedback of how we might be able to grow that with their help. So, I mean, that's what they do, and that's what they're good at. We might be able to utilize some great expertise on their end to help, to help further our message out to the community.
And so, because this is very important, is it formally in your portfolios anywhere that you are doing marketing this percentage of time? I know it's really hard to calculate, but to honor the amount of time and the importance of this, is that something you're thinking about doing, being a little more explicit about? Can you begin to make an estimate now?
Currently, it's certainly within, communications is within Liz's, you know, her job description and what she, she has identified. And that's really about the only location it sits currently. I think that's something that, that we've talked about, if you think about in the very early stages of the, the budgeting process, there was conversations about, should we be looking at a marketing position, should that be something that we could outsource? So there really, that doesn't sit anywhere in any one specific job description. There is a component too, certainly within economic development. They've had that component within their line item, within their budget for, for many, many years, and they, they utilize that marketing component and variable ways to ensure that we're hitting that outreach to the right investor.
And may I ask him one other question? So in terms of the RFP, you would be creating something sort of in, ideally what you would want, and then just putting it out there and seeing what kind of...
Correct.
...what comes back in terms of financing and ideas and all of that? And you, you want to get that by October?
Ideally, we just don't want to lose the momentum that's kind of happening right now, and, you know, doing it in October also allows us to address future events that might be coming up. For example, if we look to have another New Year's event, you know, we'd, we'd really want to be able to address that, everything's on a timeline, so I think it helps us address, by doing it in October, helps us address current, current things that might be reaching out, but also looking down the road.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Titus? Thank you, I just had a couple of questions, but a couple of comments too, because I think this is very important, but I'm concerned that the council hasn't had a good workshop session to decide what we want to accomplish, what are the goals? Because there's several things you can do with marketing, you can bring businesses in, you can bring families in, you can promote events, and what's the result, and what's it gonna cost, and what's the payback? This council really, I think, needs time to understand that, because marketing is so broad. We've asked, like you mentioned, the Economic Development Department to somehow market Auburn as a place to grow your business or a place to move to. I haven't seen any report back as far as marketing goes, what's, what we've been doing there. But I assume you're talking about advertising an event?
No, we're looking more broad as well, I mean, it, it's, it's about the city, you know, I just use those as specific examples.
Right, but we can advertise the city, but then what's the goal? Do we want them to come to an event? Do we want them just, we want to have our name out there in the state, which I don't know if I agree with?
If I could interject, just a little bit on that, it's great. Sometimes in the RFP process, you ask the respondees to state what their goals are and create a media plan based upon what they think, from an outsider looking into Auburn and what the history is, what might be more beneficial, i.e. events, combination of percentage against events, quality of living, quality of doing business. That would come back, the RFP would come back to the council, as you stated, for review, and that sometimes is an exercise in itself, given the council a last say, but also having the first draft, if you, if you would, written by people that are doing this daily. And I've had many conversations with several networks about this already, and they've approached us, and they have great vision and great, you know, thought upon the growth of this area, so that's why they're kind of excited to do that exercise. So, again, it's, and when you, and I've done this before many times in my history professionally, you let them come back and see what they think, because sometimes it triggers something that you might not have thought of.
But I still think we need to have a goal, because again, I mean, I see advertisements all the time, come to Nashville, come to New York, come to the state of Michigan because it's whatever, tourist bureaus have put out advertising, and some of them have a specific goal, like more sales tax, more tourism, more money, okay, so they can see that. But we...
We certainly have several categories that we feel that are cer, you know, we pay attention to what you're directing funds to, but also your feedback. If you think about sports tourism, you think about growth, value to the, our growth in Auburn, those are all those real broad areas that we can look at. One thing that we've done with video production is, the video production that's been done, has been done in a way that we will leverage that same video production in future outreach. It's not specific, it's not tied with just some very small editing. We can then utilize that and continue leveraging it.
I mean, I think, I wish we could have more time, because 15 minutes is hardly enough time to talk. I, I mean, the 150th is a great event, and we're advertising, and, and the mayor and the city have done a great job with that, but I don't know that we need that focus, that kind of focus 24/7 for the next few years. But if we do, can we look at community announcement sponsors? So, and this message brought to you by blah, blah, blah store, agency, or whatever, and it lists what's going on, is it a way to help pay for marketing? I have a sign in my garage that says Goodrich Tires, and then railroad across it, back in the day, the railroad crossing signs were sponsored by a company. Now, I know we can't do that, but it just seems that some method could be used here that would benefit both the private sector, the public sector, and we wouldn't be going crazy. I'm just a little bit nervous that we can lose control of, of the budget here and have a lot of money going out to marketing without a clear return that we can see, other than just more, you know, our name is out there, and in Holton, Maine, they know about Auburn. Well, great, but what does that do for us here?
On the response to the RFP is very, very detail oriented, all responses to the RFP are dollars or itemized to the penny.
Well, I understand that, but we need to have a goal.
No, but I mean, it has to come to the council for approval and discussion. This is, I think, just the first step.
Well, my concern is it becomes then a selling technique, that everybody's decided what they want to do, now they have to sell it to council. Well, I think council should first decide, what direction do we want to go in with marketing? How do we want, you know, that's my thought.
Does a council believe that marketing, the city of Auburn, vaguely, again, just for this point of this discussion, is important to the future of the city?
Yes, I mean, I do, I had something to contribute. I'm thinking of all the meetings that we attended in terms of strategic planning, this, there were, there were a lot of goals there, and the big piece of it was having a website, being able to have a person come in and just take a look at that website and know what is going on here in Auburn, and selectively choosing what they would like to do. And marketing was mentioned in many of the, you know, the meetings that we attended. So I know that we are bound to follow those strategic plan that was developed, and this is a big...
No, we're not, no, we're bound to. Nobody, we haven't even heard this strategic plan yet.
It's good feedback, but nobody's bound to anything.
We haven't even heard the strategic plan yet.
Right, right, but I mean, it's, when you hear it enough times, I mean, okay, it resonates, but we're not bound to do anything that, you know, a lot of times, I think, I've seen parallel ideas come from the council and staff, that's also been mentioned as strategic planning.
Has to come back, yeah.
You know, they're disjointed, but still, the same concept, because it's, it's out there, but we're not bound, just want to make that clear, we're not bound to strategic planning initiatives yet, we haven't seen anything.
Having just come back from Canada, I mean, and, and going to a place that I've been to before, it's, I've noticed a real big change in terms of their own marketing, and everywhere you go, and everywhere you go on vacation, you know, you, you know about stuff because of the marketing initiatives, and people aren't gonna come here if we don't market ourselves. So I think that, I mean, I would hope that there would be more discussion too, as, as Counselor Titus had said, that we would have discussions on where are we beginning? Where are we beginning and what is the plan? What are the steps? I think probably we just need more information so that we can take a look at it and put our seal of approval on it and get started, but I, I think marketing is, is crucial.
Anybody else? Counselor Hayes, you got your hand up?
Well, I did, and, well, Alfreda touched on, I really think this all fits into the strategic plan, which again, we're waiting for so we can see what has come from that process, and I think it'll be our turn to filter that as well, but I certainly feel that, you know, marketing is sort of part of it, but before we get too far ahead, I think we need that strategic plan before us, and we too have to make some decisions based upon what work has been done.
Absolutely, then we can help with the direction, right.
Just for an update for you, tentatively, before Peter left, our target date for bringing that before him was a, your August meeting, so, so we hope to have a draft ready for you to be reviewing before we then bring the Strategic Planning Committee back together to review that full document, so, so.
Be good.
Should be in your August meeting is when we hope to have that.
So, conceptually, Counselor Zonia?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to...
I was gonna say, conceptually, we all understand, I think, from the beginning, that, you know, marketing the city is important. Now, the devil's always in the details, okay, from dollar amounts to impressions to reach. And there's also, we gotta ask yourself, and I think each individual has to ask yourselves, kind of themselves, if you would, what their core level of experience is, okay? And at what point do we bring in outside vendors or citizens that have experience in this, residents, to help guide this process? Because it's not as clear cut as selling, you know, Acme tools on TV in a 30-second spot. So there is a lot of nuance there. But I think those are things, and I, I'm glad we're bringing this up early, because the process and continuing feedback to the council, and how, seeing how that develops over the summer and early fall is important. I will say October for a launch coincides well with our alumni weekend, welcome home, fundraiser kickoff for the new high school, so there is some things that we need to look at from a longevity standpoint with regards to strategic planning.
One other question, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, one, I think that since I've been on council, I've heard a lot of complaints, myself included complaining, about communications, websites, how information gets out to the public, and I hope that we look at that too, just to streamline it, I mean, our e-alerts and everything that we do to help people, because that can help an awful lot. If you can help people with the, like, the e-alerts and how to use them, then that makes it much easier to get information out.
That ties into the communication plan, and that's the one that was identified in strategic planning, was that communication plan.
Yeah.
And I think that's a focus that we need to, you know, the challenge is, it's no longer just one source of media that we push information out to any longer. We no longer have a bulletin board where we can post things. It's many different...
That's right.
...platforms, and it's just, how do we be consistent with that?
Message boards and all that, and like I said, getting corporate sponsors involved, maybe this message brought to you by type stuff.
We're bringing, we're partnering with the Career Center. And we'll be bringing a, a person on, just graduated from Central Maine Community College, with the Career Center as our partner, who is just finishing her two-year degree in marketing and graphic design. And she understands, the mayor will appreciate this, using Instagram. One thing the mayor's been asking for is, where are we gonna get an Instagram account? That'll be one of her tasks right out the gate, to get our Instagram account up and running, but also, we, if you remember when we had the city assessor in, we talked about, how do we create welcome packets that are designed for a resident, a commercial business, or even, what we want to focus on also is, a new resident that is within our senior population, because there are certain outreach that we need to do to that population group. And so, she'll also be designing those packets and working on those packets so we can get that out and moving. So, so when we look at communication plan, that's all part of it.
That's really important, and the last question I had was, do we have a budget for marketing this? I, I know there's several departments that have budgets, but do we know what we're looking to spend in FY '20 for this kind of thing?
We don't, I think that's what, we need to see what a potential RFP will bring us and what we, what we need to look at.
We wouldn't be able to spend any money in FY '20.
You currently have some money that are, that is peppered throughout several different departments, the question will be, do you want to leverage those funds for this, but it would also require additional funds most likely to move forward.
And this is where the RFP respondents first work from goal as they established, and then back into how do you achieve that goal with the number of impressions, cost per thousand, and then they get, as part of the RFP, is like, okay, we think in order to accomplish these goals we set aside, you're gonna need $50,000, whatever the case is. That is important, instead of, if you lay them in a budget to begin with, then you actually, it, it doesn't really work out long term.
I understand that part, but I just, and I'd be willing, as long as the, the goals are there and we've had a chance to know what we're gonna do and agree on it, then, I mean, marketing is good, but it can be a lot of wasted money if it's not clear what the goals and what the, you know...
Quantifiable, quantifiable, call to actions. It's the best way with a, with a strong return on investment, but that call to action is, how do you quantify that in a municipality? And frankly, I think that's where a lot of cities have been scared of, because they don't know how to quantify, they don't know how to measure, so, but Counselor Zonia, you had something?
Just two quick comments, one, the Chamber of Commerce, I know at one point there was conversation about what role they would play, and then the other thing is, is there conversation with Lewiston about an area marketing campaign?
God, I hope not.
And I'll just leave it at that.
God, I hope not, quote me on that one. Lewiston has Lewiston assets, Auburn has Auburn assets. The worst thing we can ever do from a marketing standpoint is convolute the marketing message into a 30-second or 60-second spot, you, you muddy the waters, you don't have clarity and focus. I know that Lewiston, in their budget, has marketing dollars. I can't remember the source, but I think it's around $75,000 that they're spending on marketing Lewiston. God bless them, I hope they do a great job, I really do, and if there's anything we can do to help them do that, great, just like I hope they would want to help us do Auburn's own marketing initiatives as well. Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on. Next, we might have a nail-biter. Everybody hold on, get your water. We're gonna talk about Main Department of Transportation official business directory signs. Mr. Chamings, Director of Economic and Community Development, will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I know they had it scheduled for 15 minutes, I don't expect this to be more than five minutes. Megan McLaughlin's our city planner, she did a good job putting this together. Basically, what it narrows down to is that the city only allows nine non-reflectorized signs, the national highway system replacement must be reflective, and that's current from 2014, and starting in 2020, DOT requires all to be retroreflective. So basically, with our ordinance, starting in January 1st, we're not gonna allow any signs because they don't fall underneath any of these categories. So what we're bringing in forward to you is, should we be working on the ordinance to amend to allow retroreflective OBD S signs in accordance with the MDOT? And should we consider trying to make the list all-inclusive rather than having a restrictive list that we currently do? And the third area is just to change, cleanup from chapter 200 when it should be chapter 205. So I think Megan did a great job putting the package together, but it narrows it right down to, basically, starting January 1st, we can't issue any permits because everything's restricted.
Wow. That was about one and a half minutes, Mr. Chamings. Counselor Zonia?
Well, I, I didn't get a sense from looking at the, all the notes of what these signs actually look like in real life. Do we have a picture of the difference between the two? Can you tell me where there's some that are reflective and non-reflective?
Yeah, you can, you can tell pretty easily, if you're driving down the road and you can see it at night, it's reflective, if you can, it's not reflective.
Okay, so it would be taking signs that currently exist and allowing, and having them be non-reflective? Allowing non-reflective signs?
No, we'd allow reflective signs. We do not allow reflective, the state and the national highway system's saying they must be retroreflective or reflective.
Okay, thank you.
What is retroreflective?
I'm sorry?
You said reflective or retroreflective?
There's a slight difference on how it, the light bounces back compared to lighting.
I got you, so, and I understand that most of these businesses that had these signs had got to replace them with that type of a sign. Are you talking about the directional signs that go by the side of the road?
Yeah, they say how many miles, and then the state has a bunch of regulations on the, how they go. There's some good examples in, in the packet that show those signs. Most people would want them reflective, because if you're driving down the road, then again, you can see them a lot better.
Yeah, because I understand those directional signs all have to be replaced next year.
Yeah, so I, I would recommend that we come back and try to amend this to meet the DOT standards. Biggest question you're gonna have is, why did we restrict it to certain roads and not allow them on all roads? I don't know why they did that.
Well, thank you. So any other questions?
Just, are the businesses responsible for paying for replacing their own signs?
I believe they pay for the original signs, and I'm, I'm not sure when they had to replace them, if they take that over or not, I'll find out for you though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chamings. Next, we have Assistant City Manager Crowell, who's gonna be giving a presentation on boards and committees.
I should've changed that order up, so I could've just sat right here.
It's good exercise.
That's right, good steps. So I know there's been a lot of conversations regarding boards and committees relating to residents, non-residents, ability to vote, not vote. I did reach out to legal counsel, get some feedback on this as well, we reviewed, Sue and I reviewed currently what we have. I guess one thing to keep in mind is that there's this, there's an order of authority, starts off with, we have state law that does dictate the makeup of some of our boards, who will be sitting on our boards, what, where should they be coming from, also what their responsibility role will be. Then we also have charter, we have city ordinances, we have bylaws, and then we also have inter-local agreements with some of our, our boards and committees. So we have to take all those into account when deciding the makeup of the board, and some of them are very specific on residents, some of them are specific on residents within certain wards, and some might be specific, have even more requirements. certain wards, and some might be specific, have even more requirements. If it is silent, the council can appoint anyone they desire to sit on that, on that committee if there is no clear specification as to that member. So the committee, the appointment committee has a process. That process is outlined in policy. They go, they review that process, and then they make a recommendation back to you on decisions. The council ultimately has that authority to make those decisions, unless it's a mayor ad hoc committee that does not need to go through a appointment committee. A mayor ad hoc committee by charter allows the mayor to decide who sits on that ad hoc committee that the mayor defines. The mayor can relinquish his authority and say, I want that to go through the appointment committee, or I want the council to make the recommendations. But if it's the mayor committee, then by charter, it's his responsibility to make those appointments. Couple other things that we need to be discussing regarding committees. As you know, we've talked about this before, we have 30-plus committees, boards and committees. This might be a really great role for the Charter Commission, or the Charter Review Committee, rather, to take a look at in determining some of these committees. What would you like to do with them? Do they all have a value? Or can they be merged? Is there something more that we can be doing with some of those committees? One thing that we need to look at as far as staff time, responsibility, is that we have, we have some committees that, because of a desire to try to make sure they're pushing out as much information about what they do, their role, responsibility, some are utilizing resources that had never been identified in the past as far as staff resources. One thing that we'll need to do, and we've had, we had a committee, a meeting, and I think some of you attended it, we had all the boards and committees come in for a meeting. Some of the counselors participated in that discussion. It was as we were gearing up for the strategic planning, because we wanted certain representation from those boards and committees. I think having another meeting like that with the chairs from those different committees and boards will be important, especially as you start looking at designing what our committees and boards will look like moving forward, but also about what, how much resources that that committee can pull from. Right now, it's obviously the city council, the school board, planning board, those are the, those are the three major focuses of staff time that we allocate. Some committees by their bylaws or interlocal agreements does require certain staff to sit on those and then participate. But one thing that we, a good example is just the use of this council chambers. If a committee is starting to use the council chamber and expecting video recording to be done, pushing that video out, storing that video, that's a lot of staff time. And that's something that we'll, we'll need to look at. Obviously, ultimately, it's up to the council, but we'll be identifying some of those demands on services and provide that back to you so that you can have a part of that conversation. So that's the broad review of boards and committees that I wanted to make sure I presented, but also to clarify regarding non-residents. If they're appointed by you, they have the authority to vote on a committee, because you've given them that by, the authority by appointing them to the said committee or board.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a quick question, though. I think something that, and I'll open this up. I agree, hopefully we all agree that at some point in a certain mechanism, we need to review our boards and committees. Until then, until that happens, can we all agree that there will be no additional resource requests made by any commission, committee, i.e. to move in this room, to get more video, to get be put on live TV, more staff support, until we kind of can figure this out? Because, you know, I think Counselor Titus made this point with marketing. It soon can get out of control from a budgetary standpoint and staff constraints when staff has other things to do. Something will slide away. So if we can get maybe, you know, just kind of an agreement that status quo, no changes until we could kind of reconvene and review this in detail? Everybody, council agree on this one?
Actually, I'm not sure. And the reason I say that is there may be a committee that really needs resources to be able to report out, for example, a Charter Commission committee.
Sure.
You know, so I don't know, I don't want to make a blanket, a statement...
Well, how about if they need anything that has to come to the council on the form of resolution?
Yes, with actual input from the city staff. So that's what I would like to see, rather than just making a blanket that nobody can have resources.
Does everybody agree on that? Counselor Fornier?
And we also have access to having them take their own minutes and produce the old minutes, their own minutes and report out, because that doesn't cost anything. The manpower is already there, and assign someone to take minutes and record it and report back. That doesn't cost anything, because I can envision that this could be like cornucopia. People will, you know, different committees will ask for, you know, having all of these, you know, videotaping and all of that. We don't have the staff to do that, and the staff doesn't have the time. So right now, we need to really, you know, put a moratorium on that and just have them take their own minutes if that's what they would like to do.
And we have to, you know, remember, there's always been a historical precedence that there's three bodies that deliberate in this chamber that are live aired. Planning board, school committee, and city council.
I agree with that.
You know, so if we're all in agreement, then, Mr. Crowell, then if any other requests by any committees or commissions, and maybe Sue, this is directed to you too, as city clerk, they have to go through city management first and then to council for the approval or nonapproval? Fair enough?
Sounds good.
The only other thing I would like to add is that if you have a desire as a council to not have, to only have residents on a board or committee, you can make that clear when you adopt either the resolve or the bylaws for those committees. The most recent one we did was age-friendly. I want to say we had some conversation about that when we workshopped it. There was no clear, we only want residents on that committee, so that was not included in that bylaws when that was adopted by you and by ordinance. So you also adopted the ordinance as it pertains to age-friendly. So if that's something you want, you can clearly go back through and change ordinance and make that, make that a requirement. But currently, it doesn't exist, unless it's specific by a board.
I have another specific question. You mentioned that if the city council appoint somebody, no matter where they're from, then they can be a voting member, whatever the committee decides. But if it's not an appointment by the city council, they're from somewhere else and they're on a committee, can they vote? If the committee decides they can vote, where does that decision get made, then?
How can...
All your, all your appointments, all people serving on a board, officially serving on a board, are coming through appointment process.
Okay.
Or designation by the mayor.
Okay, and so then that way, they're a voting member?
Absolutely. There can be, it always has to be approved by this body, unless it's like Phil just said, a mayor's ad hoc committee, and then I can appoint anyone without that process, and they could be from anywhere.
But they would be a voting member if you appointed?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's very, very helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you back up just a second? Did you just say that the age-friendly, they're all Auburn residents?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay. Because I know some of the board members are not Auburn residents.
What I said was, it was a conversation about that when we did the workshop, but there was no clear change within the ordinance or the bylaws that were adopted by the council. And I believe there was conversation about some representatives on that are actually outside of the city of Auburn, so.
And everybody's application that goes through the three-person council application committee, I would expect that they would look at that and be able to be a filter. And then everybody else in the council, as well as the public, gets copies of every application, which clears states where they're a resident. So, you know, that has been there for us to know. That information's there.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Do I join committees with Lewiston or other towns or whatever? We may, usually Lewiston's staff members vote, but Auburn's staff members don't.
Ex officios?
We don't typically, well, we do. I think the difference would be LA 911 has staff members that by their interlocal agreement, the fire chief and the police chief and a city counselor will serve on that committee. Those are voting members. It's really specific on, is it clear within their, their bylaws?
Well, some of the committees that I, like Great Falls TV, the staff members don't, of Auburn, don't vote, but the staff members of Lewiston do vote.
They're not appointed by the council for those positions.
There are some differences. You know, it's all about what we do. I mean, we could appoint staff to be, to fill some of those interlocal boards. And we do in a couple of different situations. LA, LATC, LA Transportation, we have the city manager and executive assistant, Jody Derisco, as voting members on LATC, along with Counselor Gary. So there is at least that one situation that pops up in my mind. And I believe too, on the airport board, Bob, with Jill, with Seisman is a voting member too. So it does happen, and then there's others where it doesn't. So it is up to this council to decide who they grant that authority to. Counsel? Counselor Titus?
Yeah, just, I think this is a little bit of an educational process too, because the committee itself writes its own bylaws, correct? I mean, that's one of the first things they do as a committee, they write their bylaws. And so by that, by not excluding non-residents, they've allowed residents. I always assume that council figured that the bylaws or the committee was set up based on a certain criteria, a certain way, but the way I've been turned now, it can be anything they want it to be unless council specifically says. So it's a learning experience going forward, because I do think that certain committees, it should not be a non-resident that's voting, that's making decisions for the city of Auburn. I just don't believe it in it myself, unless the committee itself wants to, and then the council has to approve the bylaws with the eyes wide open, knowing that they don't care if they're an Auburn resident or not, you can be on that committee. So I think that, for me, it's kind of an eye-opener. I thought it was kind of pretty much understood that you had to be a resident to be a voting member, so.
For with, you know, kind of, to talk about the sheer number of committees and commissions we have, over 30 of them, it's almost impossible for this board to be able to keep up to speed on each one of them, especially when there's certain committees and groups that just don't report back to us. And there's certain commissions and committees that, you know, in their charter that they outright have this ability to continue to reproduce subcommittees after subcommittee without any feedback from the council. And this is happening, and in the military, we used to call this mission creep. And mission creep is when things just kind of kept growing and took on a life of its own. I think we're in a situation like that, and I think with a Charter Review Committee, looking at this as one of the points will help kind of rein that in. There's a lot of different organizational styles or charts that could be utilized here. It'd be interesting to see how they would, how the best one would be, knowing what we know now. So I think this is, like Counselor Titus said, it's very educational. I think there's a law, and I think the residents of Auburn deserve to have a more streamlined, efficient government that is actionable and that actually does something, obviously within the parameters given by the council, so.
Age-friendly bylaws were adopted by you, so there are those bylaws.
Yeah. My concern, I don't think we really realized that the bylaws could be customized, that it was specific to Auburn residents. Pretty obvious, you're on Auburn committee, you should be an Auburn resident. It's pretty obvious. And so I think it's caught a lot of people by surprise.
Unless there's a special, you know, exemption because of a certain subject matter expertise in a certain field, but that should be maybe a non-voting member. But I think we should get into that.
Well, one thing that we wanted within the age-friendly was, we wanted representation of some of our senior citizen groups that are within the community. And some of those senior citizen groups are not specific to just Auburn, and so a representative might serve on that as a result of that. That's, that's where it's that conversation, at least where the age-friendly group came from. Now, all the other boards. And one thing, we'll look at the cable advisory board, because I just looked at the ordinance for that, and the way that it's worded, it's the municipal officer or their designee. So currently, Paul Fraser, I believe, sits on that advisory board as your designee, so he has the authority to vote. So we can, we'll dig into that a little further.
I don't feel he, he never votes.
Yeah, so I'll look into that.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Is there any last questions, parting thoughts? None? Thank you very much. Last, on the workshop for tonight, we have an executive session regarding economic development on a proposed credit enhancement agreement for the Auburn Industrial Park pursuant to one MRSA, section 405. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Counselor Fornier, a second for Counselor Walker. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, none being? We'll now see an executive session by vote of 7-0. We'll now see an executive session by vote of 7-0.
This is pretty good actually. On that whole scale of bad things, this is okay. It's like what, what about in the middle? In the middle, the bad to work on?
It's taken all that effort from the past and saying, up yours.
We're in the business.
Not on that property, no.
No, I mean, I'm just taking.
Are we live? Hello, hello. I don't know. Are we live?
I don't see the light on, but.
I wasn't here when they did that, you know.
Okay. Now to clear the council out of executive session. We're going to stay on a recess for about eighteen minutes while we convene at seven P M. for our regular council meeting. Thank you.
Family Trust, so they just gave ten million dollars to same areas as a customer service endowment. Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the board.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'll now call the order this meeting of July first, two thousand and nineteen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Good evening, folks. Okay. A little weird not talking about the budget tonight, huh? We have one consent item on the agenda. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for councillor Fornier, a second from councillor Walker. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? None being? Order passes seven zero. Next, we have the minutes of the June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen regular council meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? None being? Uh, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion at this time to prove the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion for councillor Walker and a second by councillor Fornier. Show of hands, all those accepting the minutes of the meeting? Thank you. Passes. Minutes are accepted by vote of seven zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to communications at this point. We have one proclamation declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month, and I'd like to actually read this out to you all, so we, so we know exactly what it says. It kinda reinforces a lot of the conversation we've had over the last few months. Whereas, Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of committees, communities throughout the country, including Auburn, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, Parks and Recreation program increases a community economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas, Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, protect, prevent flooding, and improve the quality of the air we breathe, providing vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, the city of Auburn recognizes a benefit derived from Parks and recreational resources. I, now therefore, I, Jason Lebec, mayor of Auburn, declare July as Park and Recreation Month in Auburn, and I encourage all of you to get out there and enjoy what great parks, recreation trails, ice arenas, indoor turf facilities on a rainy day only that Auburn has to offer. So, thank you very much, and I'd like to give my best out to Mark Osland and Sabrina Best. Make sure that everybody in the city enjoys our Parks and Recreation. Shall you? Appreciate it. Awesome. Thank you. I'll now open up the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business which is not on this agenda. I would ask that you state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody from the audience like to speak?
Dan Herrick, four seventy Hatch Road. I can't use the computer, but I have people putting notes in my doors, they put emails in my doors, my wife poos stuff off, blah, blah, blah. Nobody likes to be criticized, nobody likes to be beat up, nobody, you know? Nobody wants to be dis心ened on what they do for a living. But I'm very disheartened by some of the comments that are being made in this city by public officials. I hear that we've moved an individual's salary from Parks and Recreation up into the manager's office. A certain individual questioned that, and he totally got beat up. But then a councillor questioned the same thing, and it was all right. To me, this is wrong. Again, it's one of these situations where if the lake is like a mirror, you don't wanna rip, put any ripples in the water. And I understand that. I'm in business too. But I wanna read you something, and I'm hoping that you've all have gotten this email that's very disturbing. I just wanna let you know that I'm hearing a lot of positives from people throughout the community about our ability of the land, the budget with an increase without cutting any viral services. If the price of gas goes up fifteen cents, is anybody happy? Oh, absolutely not. I would like to get a copy of everybody that this email is referring to that thinks that fifteen cents on this, on the mill rate was a great thing. Because I believe when you people force it into a zero increase with our school department, you should've did the same on your own behalf. Absolutely. Done is done. And it says, of course, there are some questions and advice which is always welcome, but overall positive. And I appreciate that, cuz I'm one of them people. Except for just a few online folks whom afraid are twisting the truth or flat out lying. Now, this is a public official that wrote this. To me, if you're a public official, why would you put that out there? I got called a liar, and you all got the email about plowing snow six times. Most of you councillors know that if I make a mistake, from the public that I get information from, I come forward and sit here and I will tell you on an apology that I made a mistake, cuz that's what men do. People do it, children do it. The only reason why I let that go is because our city manager called me one-on-one after he wrote you an email, and I accepted that as an apology. He called me and apologized, and I accepted that. Okay? What he told me was not the truth, but I accepted it, and I, it doesn't mean nothing. It didn't mean nothing to me, but it meant a lot to me that he called me one-on-one as a person, and I let it go.
Mr. Herrick, I'm sorry, but you're over time.
I don't care if I'm over the time or not. It's, it's forty-five minutes first open session, Jason, and, and I know you feel offended because this is all directed at you, and I'm fine.
No, Mr. Herrick, we have rules. We have rules. It's three minutes a public session. Okay? If you wanna speak more about this later, you wanna put it in writing.
I believe that I'm being polite, I believe I'm not being any...
You are. No, you are. It's not that, this is about...
Respective.
Mr. Herrick, it's time.
I haven't mentioned any names, I haven't done anything, and I'm gonna continue.
Mr. Herrick, it's just time, sir.
Please, let me continue.
Mr. Herrick, I, we have rules.
It's forty-five minutes, open session, first reading.
Mr. Herrick, your time is up, please, sir. It's four minutes and twenty seconds.
Why are you ashamed? Have you said something or done something that you shouldn't have said because you called an individual in this city that has all the information, that does his work, and you can't prove him a liar?
Three minutes, Mr. Herrick, please.
No.
Could I say something, Mr. Herrick? Everybody who's come up here has been given three minutes.
No, that's not true.
Yes.
No, it's not true.
Listen, Mr. Herrick, I'm not gonna disgrace this body with arguing back and forth about the rules that are set forth. We have a three-minute policy. Many, many times do we go over three minutes by twenty, thirty seconds? Absolutely. Okay? But not this long. So I appreciate your time. Okay? Mr. Herrick?
No. No. I'm gonna continue talking.
Unfortunately, you can't.
Yes, I can.
You can't. Uh, Mr. Herrick, we have rules.
So, in other words, you are being the most arrogant SOB that you always are, Jason.
Yeah, listen.
You fucking people are liar, and you can't prove it.
Mr. Herrick?
You do it through email, and you don't wanna hear it on public television.
Mr. Herrick, we have rules.
Your rules are wrong. Did the council vote three minutes?
No, the, the mayor, the mayor set the rules. This is actually precedent from the former mayor.
Nothing. Mayor is a cheerleader.
At this point, chief.
Mayor is a cheerleader. You get your pom-poms out to be a cheerleader. We are wrong. You were wrong. I'm not getting up to leave. Someone wants to arrest me, left, forty-five minutes is the agenda. Do you, councillor, have any problem with me leaving? You get it. You're right, you get it.
Somebody else in the public would like to speak tonight during open session? None? Okay, we're gonna be, I'll close open session. We don't have any unfinished business tonight. We do have some new business, though. First, we have order seventy-nine dash zero seven zero one two zero one nine, adopting the Citizens Participation Plan. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for councillor Fornier and a second from councillor Walker. I'm gonna just open, I'm gonna open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Sir? You're more than welcome to if need be.
If you have questions about it.
No, bring it back to the council, Zach. Have a seat. Thank you. Is there anybody in the council that has any questions from staff on this?
No.
No? Okay. I'm gonna bring this to a vote, then. All those in favor? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? None being? Approved. Seven zero. Thanks, Zach. Get your steps in. Okay, next, we have order eighty dash zero seven zero one two zero one nine, authorizing the issuance of bonds for the Norway Savings Bank Arena. This is the public hearing in first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for councillor Fornier, a second from councillor Walker. I'm gonna open this, excuse me, I'm gonna open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this topic? None being? Okay. I'm gonna bring this back to the council. Council? Comments? Questions?
We had a good presentation at the last meeting, and I've shared that with people who had concerns, so that they know what the actual situation is. So I appreciate having that work up, so that we know that this will be a, a good deal for us.
Very good, then. Okay. Councillor Lozani?
I also received some emails with concerns, but when we presented the details about what this actually meant, it was very helpful, so I appreciate that information.
There's no other questions or comments, I'm gonna ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Young?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
No.
Councillor Lozani?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor Titus?
Yes.
Councillor Fornier?
Yes.
Okay, the order passes by vote of six two one. Next, we have several board committee appointments. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we go in executive session pursuant to M, one MSRA, section four oh five, parentheses, six A, personnel matters on all the appointees from order eight one zero seven zero one two oh one nine to order eight four dash oh seven oh one two zero one nine.
Second.
I have a motion from councillor Gary and a second from councillor Walker. All those in favor of going into executive session? Please raise your hand. Opposed? None being? We're now in executive session by vote of seven zero.
Awesome. Thank you. Now to clear the council out of executive session. Okay, um, let's see here. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on any of the appointees that we have today? We don't have a motion yet. Well, let me get a motion going.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Katie Boss.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Let's go in order if we could, please?
Yeah.
You're right there. Okay, very good. I'm sorry, go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Katie Boss as full member of the planning board with a term of expiration of 1/1/2020. As nominated by the appointment committee, this is order number 8-1-07012019.
I have a motion from Councilor Titus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any comment, excuse me, any public comment on this nomination? None being? Counsel? Any debate?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we table this to a date certain.
We've got a motion from Counsel Gary to table this to a date certain. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counsel Young. Bring this to a vote. All those in favor of tabling this to a date certain, please raise your hand. To opposed? Okay, the motion to table fails by a vote of five to two. We have a motion on the floor appointing Kate Boss. Is there any other? There's no public comment. Is there any comment or debate amongst the council? None being? I want to bring this to a vote. All those in favor of appointing Katie Boss as a full member of the planning board with a term expiration of 1/1/2020, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Kate Boss is, uh, order passes by a vote of four-three. Okay. Next, we have order 8-2-07012019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Counsel Fornian and a second for Counsel Gary. Um, is there anybody from the comment that would like to speak? None being? Debate? Counsel? Comments? None? I'll bring it up to a vote. All those in favor of order 8-2-07012019, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, motion carries by a vote of six-one. Next, we have order 8-4-07012019.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint John St. Peter to the Auburn Housing Authority as nominated by the appointment committee with a term of expiration of 10/1/2023.
I have a motion from Counsel Titus. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counsel Lasagna. Um, anybody from the public like to speak?
May I members, members of the city council, Rick Whiting from the Auburn Housing Authority, I don't speak in opposition specifically to Mr. St. Peter.
Is your mic on?
Bring it a little closer. Rick? Thank you. Mr. Whiting, thank you.
Um, I really have nothing against Mr. St. Peter.
I just have a concern, uh, that having two tenant commissioners from one building is a bad precedent. Um, I do readily admit to not paying enough attention to the appointments committee. Um, I frankly don't like the new process. I think it's bureaucratic and onerous. For example, making Katie Boss reapply to a, a board that she just was appointed to makes no sense to me. It's too difficult for people. It's limited windows of opportunity. Um, this is a process that was created a few years ago, which I think is unnecessarily bureaucratic. Um, but in this particular instance, uh, not only would Mr. St. Peter, um, be the second person from one building, uh, which is not broadly represented, representative of lower income people as the state statute, uh, contemplates, um, but it also would result in having four, uh, people from one ward. And historically, the, the city has not typically loaded boards with that many people from one board unless, um, the, there's just a lack of good applicants. And I promise in the future I will do a better job of recruiting applicants and, and making sure that the, uh, the, the committee has a good choice of people to choose from. Uh, and, um, and I would just request that you table this appointment for a month or two so that we could get some other candidates that would be more broadly representative of, of the population that the, the, uh, state statute calls for. So, I've probably run over my time, but thank you.
No, you're good, but thank you, Mr. Whiting. I appreciate that. And it sounds like we've been discussing commissions and boards quite frequently here as of late. Um, love to keep you in mind for potentially helping, um, us look at all those with your experience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public would like to speak? Sure, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council. Uh, my name is Arthur Wang. I live I live on Grandview Avenue here in Auburn. And, uh, I'm a commissioner of the Auburn Housing Authority. And, uh, currently I'm, I'm serving as chair of the, of the Board of Commissioners. And one of the, uh, concerns I would have, having two commissioners from one development, is that, uh, the commissioners are mainly concerned with the, the quality and safety of, of all of the developments. And we, we try not to get mired down in, uh, small issues, uh, within, in the developments because we have management staff for that. And my concern would be having two commissioners in one development. It would be, uh, I see it as a risk that we would have items coming, coming to the board that really should be handled by, by staff and that we could, uh, get mired down in, in debating, uh, those kinds of issues. And I, I would hope to avoid that by having commissioners from more than one, one, uh, development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wang. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on this? If not, okay, very good. I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Is there any debate? Comment? None? Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, for a show of hands, all those in favor of appointing John St. Peter to the Auburn Housing Authority as nominated by the appointment committee with a term expiration of 10/1/2023, please raise your hand. All opposed? The order fails by a vote of two to five. Next, we have order 84-07012019, reappointing Leonard Kimball as a full member, member of the ethics panel with a term expiration of 1/1/2021 as nominated by the appointment committee. Do I have a motion? So moved. Motion for Counselor Titus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Fornia. Anybody from the public like to speak on this nomination? None? Counsel? None? I'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor of the reappointment of Mr. Kimball, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? Not being passed by a vote of, I'm sorry. Counselor Gary, did you vote for this? Did you vote yes? I couldn't see you.
I phased out for a second.
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, uh, the order pass, or order passes. Next, we have resolve 09-07012019, supporting the formation of a charter review ad hoc committee. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
So moved.
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
The city clerk needs to know whether or not that was an abstention or a no vote.
No, uh, that was, we'll have to call it a default to an abstention.
Okay.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Moved.
And a motion for Counselor Hayes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second for Counselor Fornia. Okay. Let's open up the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Joe Gray, Sopra's Mill Road. I'd just like some clarification that this is in fact legal. Um, you pointed out in the agenda documents that the charter says the city shall provide for the review of the city's charter in their entirety at least once every 15 years. And that's all it actually says. It says it does not state that we must establish a charter commission to do that. It doesn't. However, state law does. Uh, in the state law Title 30A, blah, 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 chapter, chapter, chapter 111, it says municipal officers, officers may determine that the revision of the municipal charter be considered or that adoption of a new municipal charter be considered and by order provide for the establishment of a charter commission. You have to establish a charter commission. You can't do an ad hoc committee. So further in your documentation for today, it says that the council does have the option of creating a committee to review and study the charter and report back to the council with proposed amendments, which would have to be voted on. Again, that is counter to state law. In section 2104 of that, it says, "The municipal office may determine that amendments to the municipal charter should be considered and by order provide for the notice and hearing and have them in the same manner as pre-dited in subsections." So it says you can do it, but if you continue to read, it says the charter revision shall be worded as when it's submitted to voters, shall the municipality approve the charter revision or the new charter recommended by the charter commission. It doesn't say recommended by the ad hoc charter review committee. Everything in state law says charter commission. So I'd like to know if this went by legal. Did it?
We'll let you finish and then as part of our synopsis of the Assistant City Manager address.
Well, if it did go through legal, I would like to see a written copy of that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public would like to speak? None being? Okay. So we're bringing it back to the council now for conversation. Uh, the legality of it, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant City Manager Kroll here, too. We did discuss this and legal opinion at our last meeting during workshop, I believe. So if you could, just give us, uh, the synopsis of that opinion.
So in 2014, uh, the city manager that time, there was a question regarding this that came up. They utilized the legal, um, legal services of Maine Municipal Association. Maine Municipal Association weighed in regarding the charter revision in the way that our charter currently refers to revisions and changes or amendments. Um, I shared that with you at the, the last, um, council meeting, I think for, for Mr. Gray. Uh, I can certainly provide it. It was in the packet on the June 24th meeting that legal opinion was, uh, included in that packet. Um, that is the definition that was provided by MMA. If the council at some point would like to look at the committee, uh, we can certainly bring that before our legal council as well. But currently, that's a legal opinion from Maine Municipal Association.
Counselor Titus.
Mayor, uh, my question is not so much because I've had some experience with the, with the, um, county, uh, charter in that they can make changes and, and amendments to their charter by vote anytime they want to. That's not something that has a certain time limit. So I guess my question is, are they confusing it with us amending our charter anytime we want to by public vote? We can do that anytime. We don't have to wait for 15 years. Or at that 15-year interval, does it have to have a commission? I think there's a confusion there because we can amend our charter anytime we want to, just by, this council can and it goes to the next election and is voted on. The, the amendments can be voted by the public. But is that 15-year window requiring something a little different? There's two things, two ways to change our charter. But I guess I would want to have a clarification that it is actually, because I know that the committee can go ahead and make recommendations. We can approve them. They can go to the voters and we can get, make changes. But is that to the full extent of the 15-year?
So the, the title section that was referred to was Title 30, uh, section 1912, in that it's, it's stated in the, the legal opinion, rather, stated that it would seem that any major change in governmental form and scheme would probably be interpreted as a charter revision and should be achieved through the more thorough process of deliberation afforded by establishment of a charter commission.
Right.
If as a council, the opinion here was, as a council, you are not looking to make any formal major change of governmental form and scheme, then you have the authority to go this route of having it reviewed.
And then we'd have to know the definition of that.
Adopting amendments. And then yours amendments must go back before the public for adoption.
Form of government, i.e. when we go from a council manager from a government, if we wanted to change this to a benevolent kingdom, um, you know, a theocracy, something, some change, a mayor dictated with a minor city manager, that would be a major change in city government.
And that means that this committee could not do that. If, if it was the committee, they would be, they're really restricted as to what they could do.
You got a reference here in the resolve as well, okay? Um, paragraph four. Whereas the council finds that the overall foundation and purpose of the current charter is sound. So that's, that's really your governing sentence there. It's sound. Do we need a change, maybe, uh, makeup of terms of counselors for two to three years? Is there staggered, something like that? And as we discussed in the workshop, are there those types of nuances that need to be changed versus changing the overall form of government that we have? But Counselor Fornia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that the process of developing a charter is a, is a, um, a very important process. And we just don't pull up the idea of making changes every time we turn around. I know we, I've heard of a lot of conversations where we've talked about, um, well, there should be change in the charter in order for this to be able to happen. I've heard many of those comments referring to the charter needing to be adjusted. But if, if a charter is not rewritten, uh, but once every, up to 15 years, this is our opportunity to really take a good look at it. And I really believe that this time, it is time to do that. Considering all the changes that are going on, we have a lot going on in terms of, uh, a 10-year, um, you know, plan coming up, strategic plan coming up. All of this gives us an opportunity to take a look at how it all blends in and what do we want to see for our charter so that we can do and perform those functions that we've, we had going. And my, my personal request would be that we have our legal council advise us. The other thing is, I am, I'm, I'm swayed more to, um, a, um, a charter commission, not a charter ad hoc committee, because this is really, um, a very important piece of what we do.
If I could maybe help alleviate some of that, uh, one of the, one of the, one of the actions that could come out of a review, a review, is we need a charter commission. So that is an absolute, if they dig into it, but I will say, once you have that charter commission, it's full on. Their mandate is to redo the form of government that we have. A charter commission isn't elected to just go, "Oh, I think we're gonna increase the terms from two to three years."
I don't think it would be a complete redo, but I think it would be a complete review.
But that is what you're, that's what could happen. Review can happen at the review side. If a complete redo of our charter is necessary, then we can go ahead and form the charter commission. Um, and that can go, the members will go out to a vote. So the council would not have any say in that. In other words, because there'll be elected members of that charter commission. That would be drafting the charter, not unlike what LA did. Um, and their, you know, their concept was draft their charter of a potential unified cities. So that's what we're kind of looking at here. I would, I would continue to counsel going down the slow study path. Any changes still have to be approved by the voters, period. Have to. Okay? So, I mean, that is clear, crystal clear. Um, but I do think a slow process, unless we all think that the form of government we have needs to be rethought, versus length of terms or something like that. Counselor?
I, I absolutely disagree that it, this, by forming a charter commission, we are looking towards completely changing the type of government we have. In previous work that I did on the charter commission, it was doing some really good fine tuning. It was cleaning things up. It was looking at things like staggered terms. It was, which may seem like small things, but it really took a global view of a number of people over a period of time who had some strings to do this. And I really feel that a charter commission is what we should do, not an ad hoc committee. I'm afraid with an ad hoc committee that things may come up and people will not feel that there was adequate review of this. And I think the charter commission, we're, we're, we're in the end are able to look at it.
Do you all understand what happens when we have a charter commission?
Yes.
Because I mean, last I knew, the vote on that charter commission that you had failed pretty substantially.
This has nothing to do with the work that was done on the charter commission, Mr. Mayor. It just, it was, it was a different issue. This is, we really have time to look at it. Maybe it won't have a lot of large changes, but at least we have done our due diligence to have a charter commission as opposed to a hat, ad hoc committee. And we go through the process that people apply to be on it. And it's reviewed by our appointment committee. And then that group comes together and they take the time to look at it. I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
That doesn't happen in a charter commission. It's the, it's elected by the resident. It doesn't go to appointment. I mean, the residents, this will have to go in the November election, okay? If we do it this year. And I think we only have eight days to make that determination if we're gonna go for a full charter commission, for it to be elected in November.
Because nomination papers are gonna be available on Monday. So they would need to follow that same process as municipal officers.
Mm-hmm. Could you explain, just so, just take a second so everybody's clear. How many members of a charter commission would there be? How would that process work?
I think there are three options in the state statute. And I don't have those in front of me. I don't, I don't know if Phil does.
But that, all three options, other than review process, involves general election?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It, I, it's probably about seven members or seven or nine members would have to be elected.
So the way that the breakdown would be that your member, your members must be elected by one of the following three methods. One would be six voter members are elected in the same manner as municipal officers, except that they must be elected at large without party designation. The second option would be one voter member is elected from each voting district or ward in the same manner as the municipal officers, except that the voter member must be elected without party designation. The third is voter members are elected both at large and by district or ward, as long as the number of voter members is the same number of municipal officers on the board or council of that municipality and that the voter members are elected in the same manner as municipal officers, except that they must be elected without party designation. So those are your three options. You can leave, leave it at six. You can move to the, um, five, or you could do the seven.
Either way, it goes to vote. So, and, and to backtrack for a little legacy and why we brought this up in the first place was, uh, we wanted to make sure we're tying up loose ends as a council and not leaving any undue baggage, so to speak, at least the start of it. We weren't gonna finish this process, of course, on this, uh, in this term. But to start it, because the charter is clear, within 15 years, and it's within 15 years as of January 1st. Now, with timing, if the vote no on this resolve, we'll definitely delay this process to later on in the summer, fall, for an election of a full charter commission at some point in the future, probably the spring election, actually, unless we call a special election, um, at some point between, you know, November and the spring, which I wouldn't recommend. It would be a, a pretty exorbitant cost. But it wouldn't be fair for people to all of a sudden get a week's notice saying, "Oh, wow, papers have to be pulled. Do I want to be on the charter commission?" Nor would it give us enough time to make the determination before July 8th and market it and communicate it to the public that this is happening. Um, a review process is an middling step, okay, so we can look at it. Very well could decide that we need a charter commission, fully elected, in one of those three scenarios, which we will have to decide on, frankly, tonight, if that was a decision that you all wanted to make. So.
Can I just add one thing? So I mentioned the six, five, and, uh, seven. There's also three members that are appointed by the municipal officers. However, only one of those can be a municipal officer. So, so you can add those three to those numbers that I gave you originally.
Okay. Counselor?
Just looking back 15 years ago, new charter, did it change our former government?
Are you telling me? I wasn't here 15 years ago.
Are you asking, did it change your former government?
No, I'm just saying, I don't.
It did make a lot of substantial changes, what people say are actually pretty good.
Substantial changes, but we didn't change our form of government.
No, no. We've got a lot of compliments on the state level about our current charter. I mean, there's been, I've had calls from municipal, uh, officials in Waterville, Augusta, Portland, saying they really like what we do now. So that's why, you know, I think we've all heard that, too, in varying degrees. So hence the review.
Which is why we should give it a full review again, because it's so good.
Because people like it?
Yes, and it won't take us a whole lot of time. I think we're starting on something good. And it's only once every 15 years. So we might as well go and do the full review with elected members from the community working on it. I don't know why we wouldn't. Because they may come up with this. You don't want to delay it. What if the ad hoc committee says, "Okay, after three months, six months, we decide, oh, you gotta do the full charter review."
Well, we're gonna have to delay it anyways for that period of time. Logistically, we will. It's, July 8th is seven days away.
Actually, I don't see it being a bad thing. I think we're gonna have to have a, a ballot, at least in the spring, on the school referendum, correct, or not the referendum, but the budget.
The budget, yeah.
I think actually it'd be better to, we're coming up to council election in November. It would actually be good to separate, you know, a charter commission election to a different time. Otherwise, I think we'd be confusing the ballot.
So what I'm gonna say is, if you want to diffuse this, I'd like, if there's gonna be consensus here, a no vote, um, I think it would be appropriate for this not to come back up in front of this current council and to come up in front of the next council and make the determination. Okay? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think with the last time the charter commission was formed, there was two questions on the, well, one question on the ballot, to form a charter commission, and then also to elect the different candidates. So if the question failed, then there was a mute point of the people getting elected. And if it was a positive vote, which it was, those people ended up getting elected.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is there any other comment? If not, we're gonna bring this to a vote. So a yes vote would support the resolve. The next step would be for city staff to bring us their options for the creation and the makeup of the review committee. Um, ad hoc is only used to determine that it's not a permanent committee, okay? So it's still a city council committee. All appointments have to go through the appointment process and be elected by the council, okay, or nominated, nomination approved by the council. Other than that, we would discuss this future at our workshop and so forth. So that's a yes vote. A no vote kills us dead. Okay? So I'll ask the clerk for a real call vote on this. vote kills us dead. Okay? So I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote on this point.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Lasagna?
No.
Counselor Hayes?
No.
Counselor Titus?
No.
Counselor Fornier?
No.
Okay. The order fails by a vote of five, two. Okay, moving on to reports. It's summer. We're in a little slum or slowdown here, which is to be expected after a long budget season and people taking holiday vacations. I will put this invite out. I got approval from the White House today. If there's any city councillor or city official that would like to take my place in a meeting on July 16th in the White House, please let me know. Okay? Because I'm not going to Washington DC on July 16th, though the conversation is transportation. So it might be important. If anybody would like to, let me know. That we have, I'd like to talk to about council schedules. We have, I'm trying to pull it up right now. Phil, do you have that handy? This is our first meeting of July. We'll have one more meeting in July. That'll be July 15th. We are bypassing our first August meeting, and our second August meeting would be on, excuse me, right now. Let me just pull it up.
19th.
Thank you. August 19th, okay? Also, Labor Day falls on September 2nd, so we'll be having our meeting on the 9th, and again on the 16th for the 2nd. Okay? So instead of bumping to Tuesday, we're going to go to the alternate Monday. Okay? That way we don't conflict with Lewiston's meetings or anyone else's inside of Auburn.
So you said September was what now?
Nine and 16. Okay? Got it? Okay. So, other reports. So get the logistics on and out of the way. We got a lot of things happening in the city. I'd like to encourage you all to spread the word, especially with our classic Chevy National Convention happening. They'll be here in the paper, didn't mention this in their column, though I'm glad they wrote about it. There will be a shine and drag, drag and shine, right here at Festival Plaza. Festival Plaza will have bands. They'll be blocked off from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on Tuesday, July 9th. Tuesday, July 9th. It's pretty interesting. We're going to have over 50 participants from around the country, you know, coming to Auburn for a week. They're going to do a lot of day trips away, which is different. We've always talked about people taking a day trip to Auburn. But Auburn, we're closer than you think. It's closer than you think to a lot of other great things, both here in the city and outside. So I think that's interesting to talk about, and it definitely shows what can happen. Other than that, everybody have a safe 4th of July. Do not come back here all bandaged up like Counselor Walker on his finger after fireworks displays gone amiss. So we want to make sure everybody has their fingers and toes when they come back. I'm going to turn it over to counselors for comment. I'm going to start off on my right. Counselor Gary, and if we can, it's 8:20. I think we'll try to keep these comments brief and move this meeting along.
I'll be wicked brief. First Auburn Seniors is not going to be meeting this Wednesday due to the fourth being, I mean, due to Thursday being the 4th of July. I'd like to get that message out to everybody that was planning to show up at First Auburn, so they don't show up to a locked facility, which their next meeting will be in two weeks, and that will be a KFC luncheon. And if anyone needs to buy their KFC $6 box lunch, they got to call Frank Pep Pippin by next Wednesday in order to order it.
Counselor Lasagna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have actually had a very good time working with Chris Muma and Sabrina Best on a walk the ward activity for September as part of the 150th anniversary. September is Wellness Month, I think, is what we're calling it. And so I'm working with them on a project where each councillor would do a walk in their ward, their site of choosing, and hopefully also somebody like the mayor or city manager would walk with them and be able to talk about what's going on in their community, talk about the walkability of their community, the gaps in walkability, and then also be able to answer questions from people participating in that. I think September's going to be a really interesting, fun month. There's a lot of good work going on.
Counselor Hayes?
Just a little follow-up to the car show. Kind of reminds me, gets me back to a former mayor, thinking Auburn as a hub.
Dick Gleason.
Dick Gleason, right. And I think that we really are a center, and the hub, and a getaway or a gateway to a lot of different opportunities. So I think, you know, we talked about marketing earlier. I mean, that's an aspect that we have that needs, because we can get to the coast easily, we can get to the lakes easily, to the mountains and so forth. So we are a hub. We are a gateway.
Very good. Counselor Titus?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Fornier?
No report for me.
Counselor Walker?
Thank you. I want to put a big thank you out for all the people that helped to raise money for the bell tower that is going to be placed down at Anniversary Park in New Auburn. We raised approximately $20,000, and that was with the city matching our funds. So we had a great turnout of people, a lot of rain. We had great speakers out there, the people that did the speeches. And it was just a great night overall, even though every one of us got pretty wet down there. But it was for a good cause. We will be doing quite a few other things as the summer goes on, so you'll have to just kind of watch and listen to all the advertisements and the great news that the city will get out as we move forward. We're going to do some, we hope, pancakes and maybe some other things that will go on during the summer. And we're hoping to work with the Norway Arena Savings Bank. So that'll be a big plus, I think, for the bell tower to help us move the needle a little closer to the 200,000 mark before we're done. Okay, on meetings, July 8th, we will have the Bell Tower Committee meeting right here at City Hall. That's 4 o'clock, July 8th. The Age Friendly Meeting will be July 16th, Tuesday night, 5:30, Ben Gill Park and the Hacey Community Center. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Young?
No report.
Can I just piggyback? I have pictures that I took of the bell tower event, and I just have to figure out how to get it to where it's supposed to go so everybody can see it. So I'll work on that. I took a lot of nice pictures.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. No report, Counselor Young. Assistant City Manager, report.
Just two things. One, also on the same night as the Chevy Car Show, will be a blood drive during the day. The Battle of the Badges will occur at the Hilton Garden throughout the day, so we encourage people to come out for the blood drive. And you can choose PD or FIRE, whoever you want to support. No one will know, so you can make your own choice.
Oh, no, they'll know.
And.
What's the time again on that, please? You said Tuesday, July 9th. What time?
Chief, is it all day? It's all day.
All day, like 9:00 AM, chief? Like 9:00 AM start time?
I believe 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM? Thanks, chief.
And the mayor, you mentioned fireworks and no injuries. As a reminder, City of Auburn has an ordinance that prohibits fireworks. Encourage everyone who does not know that to realize that fireworks are not allowed within the City of Auburn unless it's at the fireworks show, which we hope everyone comes out for, for Festival Plaza.
Counselor Hayes, how about this for a tagline? Auburn, where fun goes to die.
Say it again.
Where fun goes to die. No fireworks. Fair enough. Safety first. Okay, that's it for reports. I'm going to open this up to the second and last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council, but any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Anybody in the public like to speak? None? I will now close this open session. We don't have any more executive sessions, so at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move for your adjourn.
No motion for Counselor Fornier, a second from Counselor Walker. Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, none being the ayes have it. We stand adjourned.